All right, lights don't make flashing.
I show it's 5:30. We'll call the June 16, 2025 City Council of Cresco, Iowa meeting to order roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Tonight we'll act on the consent agenda which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from June 2, 2025, approval of minutes from June 4, 2025, special meeting, approval of minutes from June 12, 2025, special meeting, approval of tree surgeon license for Stevenson Consulting LLC, DBA Stevenson Tree and Stevenson Lawn, approval of street closing for portions of South Elm Street, parking spaces and sidewalk for a customer appreciation event on June 19, 2025, approval of application for tax abatement under the urban revitalization plan for Christopher and Kayla Sullivan, approval of pay request number two for $7,159.84 to Dave's complete construction for the scene shot project.
Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
Street Department started chip sealing, got everything up and running. They've done some. The Times Plane Dealer is going to do a newspaper article on the sewer plant project and it's going to be in next Wednesday's newspaper. Sarah came in and Mike and I talked to her last week one day and gave her some pictures and she wanted to, I think it's going to be a front page, front page thing is the plan and that'll be next week. Generation X came back last week to the airport and tidied up some stuff out there. They've got two valves, water valves, that got tipped off to the side so they're hard to get on. So they've got to come and fix them and it's either going to be them or Wick's Construction. They're kind of figuring that out between the two of them. And I think we have to wait until that's done to close that project.
Correct.
So hopefully this week or maybe next, Malik's Pond, we're going to do some cleaning back there as well. We did find in the street, if you know where Fred Walters lives and Kevin Shabro there, there's a big culvert at the bottom of the hill. And it's, I think, a 60-inch culvert that goes under the road and up this way and collects all the water from there. And it looks like the culvert's shot. So that's kind of a big fix. Memertz is going to get back to us with a dollar amount and we're going to have to, it's not, figure out whether we're going to fix it. It's not an emergency, but it's something if we don't do it this summer, it's probably going to have to be done next summer for sure.
Isn't the culvert rotting from the inside?
Yeah.
The holes are coming?
Yeah.
It actually could?
It's got, I think there's some cement on top and parts of it. We did re-cement that actually about 10, eight to 10 years ago. I can't remember if it was right before I got on the council or right afterwards. But the bottom of the culvert's shot and the water's going around the outside and taking the bank with it, so.
It's a steel culvert.
Yeah.
So this is the one that's under Eighth Street?
Yeah.
Do we have to dig up the street?
Probably, yeah.
That'll be a mess.
Yeah.
That'll be a mess.
Yeah. We had a bike trail meeting last week. Tim's here to talk about that, so that's good. I won't say anything there. We do have, if you see down the intersection on Highway 9 by Subway there, they've got a cone in the southeast corner and there's an intake there for the storm sewer that's bad, so we're going to have to dig that up too. That one's more emergent. That'll include maybe some part of Highway 9 being blocked off for a little bit and things like that. So, and that's going to involve Memertz too, so we're waiting to hear back on that. And that'll be something that probably gets fixed pretty soon. So it's kind of collapsed there and not safe. So that's what I have.
So the question?
Yep.
Question about that up at Eighth Avenue?
Yeah.
So if the part we can see is rotting, is the part further back, like a block up, rotting?
That's probab-, you know, I know, you can crawl in there. I think Freddie did a little bit, if I remember right, one night. I think when you get back that far, that's cement. I believe cement or clay, so that doesn't typically do what this culvert is.
Oh, okay. So it's a culvert under the street, but before that it's cement?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, and there is another, so there's like, there's three pipes coming under the road right there and one of them just comes from the other side. Another one comes from that up, goes up behind, I don't know, Dennis Ruffridge is all the way up to the school. That one, right at the road on the north side, has collapsed and you can see where the curb and gutter has done that. And we can, Lonnie will dig that up. He can dig, those guys can dig that up and fix that. But the big one, that's going to be a little bigger undertaking, so.
Just had, have you heard anything on our speed signs coming into town?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Nope. Nope it is yet. We started that last winter, I guess, and they put the new posts up.
Yeah, posts and stuff.
Probably six, eight weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have it.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Police.
I got nothing.
Nothing. All right. Administration.
The May financials were included in the packet. We've been busy with end of fiscal year and finishing up some grant reporting. Thank you for all those that attended the focus group meetings. If you guys were unable to attend, we do have the packets of information if you would like a copy of it. Otherwise, it will all be in the final comp plan as well. The auditors will be here at the beginning of August and the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference is September 17 through 19 in central Iowa. Wendy will actually be doing a presentation on the scene shot project. So if anybody wants to go, let me know when I can get you guys signed up.
Thanks, Nikki. Committee updates.
We had a park board meeting. Basically, the fitness center, they have three more increases in membership, plus the 24/7 has went up, eight more. There is a discussion on, out at the pickleball court, it's, water's building up on the, around the poles and they're all tipping in. So there's some work that has to be done. There's a company called Surfers of Iowa. They're supposed to be coming in this week to take a look at that and see if they would stand behind recoding it or, because the other company was bought up, but this company. So we do have to do some work on the poles because it's all messed up.
And that's poles that hold the nets up?
Yes. And then they're talking about the water that's coming on, maybe putting some gravel by that north fence, you know, dig some of the ground up and put the gravel that would hold the water from getting onto the pickleball court.
Airport match, quite a bit of stuff going on there. The runway lights are fixed by Claire. The discussion of the cut trees and bush brush in the ravine. Basically, I got with Dave, we're getting a bid from Memertz to clean that out and burn it. We were looking for an update on the big pile of dirt. When is that going to be flattened out, so?
Right, and we're waiting for Memertz for a bid on that too.
So they're out there for that too. We got two bids for the lean-to and the tractors. More storage, I brought them into, to you, which we turned down because they had nothing in there that said what was going to be done, how it was going to be done. It was just a bid. So basically, we went back and Dave got with WHKS and they got us a bid to make a skid or how it should look.
Drawing, yeah.
And Jerry Ferry is done this year, so Ross Merritt is now the new chairman for the Airport Commission.
Any other committee updates?
Well, to the Theater Commission, they're busy working on fundraising projects and working with the contractor and the work to get going on the new scene shop, so things are going good.
You can still vote for Alex to kiss the pig?
Thanks, Nikki. Thank you.
I had to throw that in.
Any other committee updates?
Oh, mine made later this week.
All right. If there are none, we'll move on to comments from the audience.
That's where Tim will talk, yeah.
Gary, can you pass your hour? You go first. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, well, not to me, yes. My name's Tim Wolford. I'm the president of Perry Springs Recreational Trail Association. Along with the Howard County Conservation Board, I'd like to invite you to a ribbon cutting celebration marking the 25th anniversary of the Perry Springs Recreation Trail and Prairie's Edge Nature Center. Our joint ribbon cutting ceremony will take place during the next Cresco Chamber Family Fun Night on Wednesday, July 2. The Fun Night runs from 4 to 8 and we'll have the ribbon cutting ceremony at 5:30. And that'll be right near, there's a new sign out there by the nature center. Get my directions. It would be north and east edge of the nature center. So right off the market, basically. In conjunction with the Family Fun Night, there'll be a game truck, balloon guy, moonmobile, food vendors, nature center tours, and all that. Please come and enjoy the festivities. Thanks. That was all I have.
Are they going to do a ribbon cutting at Walt Park too? I know they kind of talked about that and maybe do both or not really, or?
I don't believe so, Dave.
Okay.
I think we're just going to do the one ribbon cutting ceremony.
Yeah. And then do you want to talk about the new 10-mile trail that's in the works? Or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. I don't have any details of that.
Right.
Yeah, there's a few other things that we'd like to work out, but they're ways off, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you, Tim.
Yeah, thank you.
There are no other comments from the audience. We'll move on to new business. Item number one, request from Brady Norman to connect to city water and sewer.
So the resolution that was drawn up was given to Brady and his attorney still hasn't come back to him with any legal advice on it. They had some questions and last week and I talked to his attorney for just a few minutes on if there's a potential workaround for the main hooking in through the school. And I think that's kind of what they're looking at, at something to do. I don't know. So he said he was in a hurry if he didn't want, if we didn't want to act on it tonight. He wasn't going to be out anything if what we have is, you know, a contingent resolution. So it's designed that the footprints laid out, so Brady knows what he has to do and we know what to expect of him. And of course, if something arises, if you would approve a contingent resolution and something would arise, there's ways to deal with that and so on too, based on how it's written right now. And then eventually then there would be the final resolution that would be approved by the council. And that's the one then that the DNR, that's when we would be signing off on all the permits. The engineer would sign off all the permits and then the DNR would give its blessing. And once that happens, it kind of sounded, I think we're all here with WHKS, that doesn't, with the DNR side doesn't happen overnight, so it's a little ways out. So whether, whether you want to table it tonight or act on it in any way, shape, or form, I guess that would be up to you and how you want to move forward.
Can you move the table?
I second that. I just don't see the point if they're going to, you know, want us to change 17 words of it. I don't see the point.
But by tabling it, does it, he can't go forward with anything until?
No, 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 no. He wouldn't, I mean, he wouldn't be able to ultimately until the DNR would sign off it and that would be after the council gives its final approval and everybody's in agreement. I mean, everybody, everything would be laid out there as to what should happen. And then it's my understanding that they are kind of, they're the last ones to sign it.
And he knows what we're looking for because he's presumably seen a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah. We sent him, we sent him the copy and that's what his attorney has, so.
But are we just putting off a no vote? If he's not going to do the resolution or anything like that, I just don't see what we're doing. I mean, I understand table it and in two weeks from now we're going to put it back on. I mean, right now, if the resolution's not done the way we wanted it.
Right now, it is the way we wanted it.
But I mean, but he hasn't fulfilled the resolution.
Well, no, that won't, the one now is a contingent one. And it just says, here's what we expect from you.
Right.
Right? So it's not locking the city into anything other than this is what we want, if that's the right term. Before anything would happen, there would be a final vote on that resolution. So.
So what would we be voting on tonight?
You'd be approving the contingent resolution.
Yeah.
Basically explaining what he needs to do to move forward.
Yeah. And the information there is from WHKS and our attorney, so, yeah.
Which, I mean, I think in other cases, we know that we're going to have to vote. I'm thinking of the lease for the Verizon Tower. They sent us one, we sent it back, we know, we each knew, but we didn't vote on it until it-
Sure.
Both sides had agreed on the wording.
Right.
And at this point, he can't ask us to say, take something out because it's a DNR requirement.
Right.
But maybe he wants a wording change that we would be fine with, or more correctly, our lawyers would be fine with.
Right. So, go ahead.
We really don't gain or lose anything by passing that resolution tonight. I mean, you're just saying here is the parameters that you need to meet and there's some other outlying issues involved with this that we have no control over.
Listening to WHKS, it kind of sounded like when they go through the DNR process, they'll answer a lot more questions than we had, but they're not going to know until they've gone through the process, is my understanding of it.
And the DNR will look at it before we?
I believe they're the last ones to sign off on it because we have to, the form that WHKS showed me was page, page and a half, not very much on there, other than there's a spot that the engineer has to sign off on, that they're good with it, and the city has to sign off on it, that we're good with it. And then they get it, the DNR gets it then.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the engineer has to have a license number, correct, on that?
I believe, I believe so. I'd have to look again.
So it can't be anyone who's not licensed and gone through the proper channels?
I believe so, yeah. And that's DNR stuff there.
Yeah, yeah.
He'd have to have all plans and specifications by the time he gets to that versus just kind of what we've seen so far.
To me being that it's just a contingent resolution, I would like to go ahead with it tonight.
So we vote on tabling it, or?
Well, you don't technically need to vote on tabling it, but.
Well.
I guess when there's a motion on the floor, get a vote on that.
But do we gain anything either way? By voting to pass it or?
It's going to be back on in a couple of weeks or whatever, anyway.
Will we have more information in a couple of weeks on how these things are going to play out?
We could have something from his attorney, I would assume, that they would maybe, maybe like change, maybe not. I don't know, but.
Well, we have, the table's on the floor already.
Go ahead with that then.
Well, unless we have a motion to-
Jan made a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Yeah. Amy did.
No, I seconded the motion to table.
Right, that's what's on, that's on.
But you said we don't need a motion to table.
If you, what happens if you, I'm just thinking out loud here. Let me think a minute. Not out loud.
Well, I think when there's a motion on the floor, you either got to vote on it or withdraw the motion.
Right, yeah.
But by voting on it to allow him, take his plans and work issues out, it's not going to, it's not going to change anything. I mean, all this is just saying, here's what the seven or whatever, how many things that WHKS brought to us and advice of counsel or legal counsel, here's your stuff. But it, no, it's not a pass to go ahead and start doing anything.
It's a, it's a resolution that's contingent based on stipulations so that he knows he has to have a civil engineer look at it.
Yeah.
He has to go through the DNR permitting process, what, basically what the council is requesting and requiring in order for us to consider doing the possible connection of water and sewer.
So he would have to have it looped, he would have to have it approved through the DNR for the water and sewer, the stormwater permits.
So by not acting on it tonight and not going forward, we're never going to get the answer we're looking, I mean, not we're looking for, but what we're going to need to either nay or yea with this project.
And the only, the only side to it is that he said that his, his legal counsel has not reviewed it at this time and he can't say whether or not he would accept the resolution as it is, which the resolution as it is is exactly what the city is going to require. So whether he accepts it or not, I'm sorry, unless they want verbiage changes or something of that nature. But the resolution is a, is a clear pinpoint, or the contingent resolution is a clear pinpoint document that's stating, we're doing this, you're doing this, you're doing this, you're doing this, and in return, then we would consider the connection of water sewer.
So why not?
Well, because I don't see the point in passing a contingent resolution tonight and tomorrow his lawyer comes back and wants to change three separate words, which doesn't change the effect of the whole thing. And we would, let's say, our lawyer would agree to it. And then we, so then we have to replace the contingent resolution. I just think it makes more sense to wait. He has our requirements. We're not slowing him down in any sense at all.
We're actually giving him more time.
No.
Well, I mean, if we're tabling it, we're giving him time.
We're giving his legal counsel time to review it.
Yeah.
But his legal counsel could come back and say, we want these three words changed, and then we would have to redo the whole resolution all over again, is what I'd want to be doing.
I don't think it's slowing him down at all.
His legal counsel slowing him down.
Yeah.
That's what's happening, in my opinion anyways.
Six of one, half a dozen.
So we have a motion to move forward with it. Is there a second?
Wait a minute here.
You got the motion on the table, the table, you don't need a motion.
Jan made the motion to accept it and approve it.
The motion was already on the floor to table it and that wasn't voted on. So number one, we got to vote on the motion to table it. Then if we want, we can vote on Jan's motion, but we have to take the motion.
Table it first.
Because the, who made the motion to table it and you second?
So then.
Once it's tabled, then that motion wouldn't come into effect.
I'm sorry?
I said, once it's tabled, their motion would not be in effect.
Right. And so what I was just saying was, when we were discussing it about them wanting to table it, was that I was in favor of moving ahead with it, contingent on the resolution.
So if the motion to table fails, then we vote on your motion?
But it really wasn't a motion. It was just, I was-
The fact.
Stating your opinion.
Okay. So we got a motion, a second. Roll call.
Hassan.
This is to table, I should say.
Carmen.
No.
Kreener.
Table it.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Table it.
So table it until we hear back from his attorney, correct?
Right.
All right. Moving on to item number three, third proposed, or third reading of proposed ordinance 254, which amends Chapter 92, Sections 02 and 03, Chapter 99, .02, Chapter 106, Section 08 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to water rates, sewer service charges, and yard waste fees. Ordinance number 524, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates, sewer service charges, and yard waste fees, being enacted by the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section 1, Chapter 92, Section 02 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.02, rates for service. Water shall be furnished at the following monthly rates within the city, effective July 1, 2025, for 7,000 gallons used per month at $6.65 per 1,000 gallons. Minimum bill is $9.98 based on 1,500 gallons. Next, 60,000 gallons used per month at $6.07 per 1,000 gallons, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $5.56 per 1,000 gallons. Section 2, Chapter 92, Section 03 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 92.03, rates outside of the city. Water service shall be provided at the following monthly rates based upon water used and furnished outside of the city limits, effective July 1, 2025, for 7,000 gallons used per month at $14 per 1,000 gallons. Minimum bill is $21 based on 1,500 gallons. Next, 60,000 gallons used per month at $12.75 per 1,000 gallons, all over 67,000 gallons used per month at $11.68 per 1,000 gallons. Section 2, Chapter 99, Section 02 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 99.02, rates for service. Each customer shall pay a sewer service charge for the use of and for the use of the service supplied by the municipal sanitary sewer system based upon the amount and rate of water consumed. Sewer service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates, effective July 1, 2025, $11.16 per 1,000 gallons within the city limits. Minimum bill is $16.74 based on 1,500 gallons. $22.32 per 1,000 gallons outside city limits. Minimum bill is $33.34 based on 1,500 gallons. $11.16 per 1,000 gallons for high-volume users that are subject to industrial sewer rental agreements with the city. $7.20 per pound per BOD5 times 30-day average BOD PPD for users subject to industrial sewer rental agreements with the city, where BOD5 refers to biochemical oxygen demand. Section 6, Chapter 106, Section 08 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa is repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. 106.08, collection fees. The collection and disposal of solid waste as provided by this chapter are declared to be beneficial to the property served or eligible to be served and there shall be levied and collected fees therefore in accordance with the following. Two, yard waste. The fee for collection of yard waste is $3.25 per, $3.25 per month for each residential and commercial premises. Section 7, severability clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 8, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
Second.
Roll call.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Item number four, approval of ordinance 524 pertaining to waste, or water rates, sewer service charges, and yard waste to use.
Second.
Roll call.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Item number-
Actually, I think maybe you should read the whole thing again.
I would like to.
One more time.
One more time.
Remember, you don't have to.
Item number five, resolution committing fund balance resources for general funds and special revenue funds, GSB 54.
That's just a yearly one that we're committing, ones that have been donated for a certain cause.
So we're committing them to be used for that cause.
Correct. So like one was special needs material, so that has to be used for special needs material, that kind of thing.
Hey, I'll second it.
Roll call.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Item number six, motion to write off uncollectible customer accounts for fiscal year June 30, 2025.
We just had, we just had one this year. I think it was like $17.
Water bill?
Yeah, so they sold the house, so we were not able to assess it to the property taxes. So $17.57.
Spend more money trying to get it.
Get it.
I'll second it.
Who did the first?
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Item number seven, recommendation of boards and commissions to appoint members for a term of three years expiring 6/30 of 2028. Library Board to reappoint Joe Kletka. Library Board to reappoint Brian Sheehy. Theater Commission to reappoint Kelly Bartley. Theater Commission to reappoint Steve Lictegg.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
And McConnell.
Yes.
Item number eight, discuss impossible motion on sewer and park vehicle.
So I put this on the agenda. The sewer department got a new truck earlier this year and we had discussed that it would be going to the park department and they would not like to keep it. I figured you guys should decide what you want to do with the vehicle.
Part of our decision making on the new vehicle for the sewer department was that was going to the park and rec, correct? November 18, 2025 meeting. So if that is in fact the case, I mean, we have to honor that. If they need a vehicle, there's a, they could use the blue truck from Park and Rec?
Yeah, that was my-
Yeah, that was my view.
I think that would take care of that real quick. They need a third truck, we have a third truck.
Are you familiar with this truck, Dave, does it have some special accommodations?
I mean, the one that was, is intended to go to Park and Rec, I mean, it's, it's got a toolbox in the back, yellow light, that would probably be the biggest thing, I guess, you know?
No special equipment or anything like that that's attached to it?
No, no, no.
That, that blue truck has been running around town since I moved back here, I think. I mean, it is such a fixture.
The 1994 one?
I can't imagine. I mean, the park department really deserves a replacement truck.
And you know, I think we, we should honor what we said, otherwise they would've never got a truck. So, to me, that truck, does this take a motion, or what?
I would say yes, a motion.
I'll make that motion that that truck goes to Park and Rec.
Second.
You second it?
Roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
If I could add one thing before we get to that, you know, vehicles are gonna get to be an issue for transportation, different things. You know, if we got, we got police cars that are gonna be, be auctioned off this, this summer that are being replaced, can we not decommission one of them and use for a city vehicle that could use for going to events or going to schooling? I mean, they're, what, mid-mileage cars, 130, 140,000 miles, but still got a lot of life left in them? You're not gonna replace a vehicle like that for what you're gonna get for it on an auction. And if transportation is an issue, I mean, I think I've heard the ladies say themselves, they just soon drive a car, then a pickup to...
Yeah, I'm not comfortable driving a big truck in the cities.
To school and stuff like that.
I don't know, I think the police has two or three extra cars. I think they were gonna keep one just 'cause, but I think there was a couple in Pallas they were gonna auction off, so...
It's probably a lot cheaper, given the number of conferences we go to, to just pay mileage.
That was my thought.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I like the idea if we were going to a lot more conferences.
Is there any need for any other employees during? I mean, we have them here, here's an opportunity, or do we take what we get for them on an auction?
Right.
And I know usually when I put them up for auction, I'm starting to nickel and dime them, pretty good.
So we're always giving them away.
Say that again?
They're starting to nickel and dime them, lots of work is starting to get put into them.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, I know what you're saying.
Just throwing it out.
Yeah. I mean, if he's got two to sell, maybe we keep one and see what, see what happens, I don't know. That's kind of up to him too, I suppose, the chief, but...
And we can talk to him and see what his thoughts are on it.
And we can bring it up at another meeting.
Sure.
And just one other thing I'd like to bring up too about Park and Rec is that east part, or park out there by me, Steve MacCarville Park, Raymond Zoo ride down from Licktags, those guys have been doing a fantastic job of mowing it. I don't know if you stop and look at that, from the hill when you're coming down, it looks like a professional baseball field. So just a shout out to those guys, the, the care and stuff that they're putting into, that's a first-class facility, and it shines right now, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Item number nine, discuss citywide cleanup.
I put this on the agenda for...
I brought that up, where I had some people that approached me about if we would do a citywide cleanup, and of course, you know, we don't have it in our budget, but I mean, if we're trying to keep the city clean, you know, if we had a chance to clean up some of the crap around some of our places...
One of the, one of the things that I had asked Hawkeye Sanitation, might've been even last fall or summer, they said they don't have the trucks or the proper trucks and amount of people to do a curbside cleanup. If we would, he said they could put the roll-offs out at the airport, and people could bring them out there, would be an option, if we wanted to, somebody would probably have to monitor it to make sure they're people from town, and to make sure they're throwing away the right stuff, and so on, but, he said they don't have the equipment to do a curbside, so...
Well, plus we ran into so many problems with people putting like televisions on other people's driveways, and then make the sin, the second person has to pay for it.
Right, that's where, if, if, if they were able to make something work out there, and it was monitored by somebody, you would hope you could...
Yeah, yeah.
...tail that, but...
If we were to do something like that, could we use, say we had a college kid home for the summer, we did a citywide, or not a citywide cleanup, but we allowed, or had a dumpster set up at, what, we, at the airport or by Hawkeye, or whatever it may be, could we use one of our part-timers to sit out there for a day and check and make sure that everything is okay?
That responsibility on a part-time person, that would almost have to be representative from Hawkeye to monitor what goes in that roll-off.
Or from the city.
Right.
But if they're already talking, they don't have the manpower or the workforce to do that.
And then you're gonna run into, what hours are you gonna do it, I mean, if you do it during the day when most of our staff is working, I mean, then you're hitting with people who are working, and they can't take it out there.
You know, maybe it's a Sunday, I don't know, morning, or Sunday from nine to three, or Sa- I'm sorry, Saturday, Saturday from a nine to three.
But then is Hawkeye gonna wanna be out there?
I don't, yeah, I don't know, no.
Whenever people call City Hall and they ask about it, we encourage them to buy extra garbage bags and put it out themselves, because we split the cost between everybody. So I mean, if they have extra garbage, we don't tell them to wait, we just tell them to buy the extra garbage bags and utilize it that way.
The last time we did it was probably seven years ago? I think, you know what, I think Rod was still...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Here. Seven, eight years ago.
I'm sure if you do the dumpsters, that's gonna really cut down on the amount of cleanup. I mean, there's a lot of people that chuck their trash in their yard that'll haul it out to the curb. If we say, you gotta haul it to the airport.
Right.
But at least it's a start, I mean, I don't...
It's a start, yeah.
I mean, I don't care, I'll monitor for a while, just to get something started. But I don't know how long will we do it though, Saturday, and, just a Saturday?
I, I don't know.
I mean, why wouldn't we just put the dumpster right there by Ross's area, to me?
'Cause the problem is, they can't put hazardous in there, and...
You know, are you gonna do paint and stuff and set that off separate, or is...
Well, we have, I mean, we, I'd love to see us have a hazardous waste truck come over from, where is it? Floyd Mitchell?
Yeah.
The hazardous people? 'Cause they're kinda picky, I mean, when I took some stuff over there, they, they didn't just say, well, dump it over there, they looked at each thing. And they asked me what it was, and I'm like, I have no idea.
I was thinking we estimated it could be a $6,000 to $8,000 cost, based on what the last one cost, and...
What do you even want dumpster, you'd be a no?
No.
No, no, no.
It might be a little cheaper if the trucks aren't running around, picking it up, and they're providing, you know, manpower and stuff to run their trucks. If you had a roll-off, and you had somebody just, you know, checking the stuff as they come in, and do a Saturday morning from eight to three, or something like that, these are the hours.
Maybe what we need to do is, Dave could reach out to Hawkeye and see what they could do, what they, what they could man, or what they could not man. Obviously, a, a, curbside won't work for them, they've told us that multiple times. But maybe this is a solution that's level ground, and they, they can do something with that, I don't know, but if, if that's the case, we could have Dave reach out, talk to them, find out, and then next meeting, we could talk through with what they've said they could do, or what they would propose doing.
Another option would be to discuss it during budget time, 'cause I'm guessing they're not gonna get to it this summer, so you'd be looking at it next summer anyways.
Well, and ask them, how, how do I, how do I phrase this? How fine the distinction would be between what they can take and what, in other words, I mean, we know you can't put cardboard in there, can we put construction waste in there? 'Cause I think that goes to a separate dump, you know, and like, okay, what would you have to distinguish between?
When they did it last time, I don't remember, did, was it like for a whole week, and you, they just picked it up when they could, or was it?
No, it was based on your garbage days, so if your garbage day's Monday, it had to be up on Monday. The Tuesday was that.
So they effectively made another round or two through each neighborhood. But the big thing is, then they have to drive it over to the Winshie Glenville.
But then there were a lot of people that, oh, I missed it, you know, can you come back and get it? And people would call, and people would also call when they got the bill, because they didn't utilize it, and they don't wanna pay for it.
Right, because the bill got put on...
Split it between residents.
Yeah.
I think we paid for half of it, and the rest got split.
Well, I think our first step is to talk to Hawkeye to find out what is possible and what is feasible, and then we can go and revisit it from there.
And the other thing, I mean, if, if Hawkeye thinks this is feasible, why couldn't we put out the call for, you know, strong young men, not to be sexist here, with a pickup truck, who could help people who couldn't carry stuff? Or whose car, you know, they only have a small car, to help them get stuff out there on a volunteer basis? But I mean, that's a next step.
Police over here with the old school, don't they?
The Mission?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could work with some civic groups, I would think, you know, the different groups in town, uh...
They come on and help people move.
You know, offer them free pizza or something.
But the Mission does help people move, so, they might jump on that.
They help people move, more or less.
They help Jordan at the library, get rid of a bunch of garbage.
More or less.
Who's that that helps?
The Mission.
The Mission.
That's a good idea.
Do they get reimbursed any?
But I don't think they can drive, so you'd have...
You'd have to provide a truck.
Yeah.
The blue truck?
Yeah, good idea.
I'll talk to Lucas and Julian and see what we come up with.
All right. Item number 10, discuss yard waste site.
Oh, excuse me, and could you be sure to ask them about hazardous waste?
Yeah.
I think you have to go through Floyd Mitchell for that.
Yeah, yeah, but could we collect it and take it to Floyd Mitchell, or do they have to send a representative?
No, you can deliver there.
No, there shouldn't be...
Oh, no, I mean, we can go, we're entitled to use the hazardous waste dump at Floyd Mitchell, I think.
I think when they were here last time, they brought the container.
Yeah.
And we had to provide staff, I think.
Oh, okay. But how would we handle that if we can?
Like seven years ago, there was a lot of fluorescent lights, and there's like...